Name is Angela Chisholm. I'm a proud Ben Hurer resident for the last 13 years. I want to be on the school board because I'm truly passionate about education and I have been for a very long time. I believe that education is the great equalizer. I think that it gives everyone a chance for an equal playing field and can really pull people out of poverty if they can take advantage of a really solid public school education. And likewise, I believe that equality is very important. I don't think it should matter what side of the 97 you live on. You should be able to have the same opportunities regardless of gender, address, socioeconomic status. It's really important that we have an equal playing field for every one of our students.
Great. Thanks so much.
Sure.
Okay, so why do I want to be on the school board? I want to be the voice for all students. I feel like there's a lot of other people that represents a lot of other interests, but there's no pure student voice that is out there other than the school board. So sometimes I like to call the school board the union for the kids. And I have a lot of the same things that you said. It's, you know, it's the great equalizer. It helps people with poverty. It crosses poverty lines, it crosses minority lines and learning disability lines if you provide a great education. It's the best investment our society can make and it changes people's lives. For instance, if you drop out of high school, you are expected to earn $12.20 an hour. If you graduate from high school, you're expected to earn $16.70 an hour. And if we can get you to graduate college, you earn $29.83 an hour. So there's great incentive to get kids across the line and it just demonstrates how important education is and why it's the best investment that we can make. And I want to be that voice for all students to succeed. When I went on to the Oregon School Boards Association, student achievement was not one of their goals.
Wow.
And so I have been a strong advocate at our local level, which means you have to have a state presence because that's where our dollars come from. And getting student achievement to be lobbied for, I think, is really important as an accomplishment.
So before we dive into a couple issue-related questions, can you both describe a little bit about your background and what makes you qualified for a short work?
So I graduated from the University of San Diego, California State University. Lived by a degree in history with the intent of becoming a high school history teacher. I started taking education classes and working towards that, but then life happened and I got married and had kids and started moving around this country a little bit and then ended up here in Bend and have had the awesome privilege of being a stay-at-home mom with my two boys who are nine and 11. My husband and I also have a small business, Celtic Lands, that we own properties that I manage, which has offered me a great deal of flexibility with my kids as well. I volunteer constantly at the school. I'm in there, you know, several times a week usually. I was on the PTO board for two years as a giving campaign chair and was able to really streamline the process and make it a lot easier for our families to make contributions. I was in the school so much, they actually asked me to be a substitute educational assistant because they were shorthanded at the time. So that gave me another insight to be in the classroom frequently and really have my hand on the pulse of what's going on inside our schools. I also was able to recently start a Lego Robotics Club for our school, which I think is such an awesome way to teach kids. It's hands-on, real-time engineering, STEM, like, you know, the whole gamut. And it's just such an exciting program and I would love to be able to, you know, make sure we could get something like that into every kid's hands that was interested.
Great.
My son did Lego Robotics.
Isn't that the best? My daughter as well. I just love it.
My son too.
That's good.
Oh, okay, so what background?
Backgrounds.
Okay, so I think what makes me qualified is my passion towards education and my passion towards all kids. My background is that I graduated from Michigan State University with a pre-med degree. And I moved here with my, to raise my family 13 years ago and opened our first business. I have a business background which has been really good for me during budgetary times. It's very difficult to manage budgets when you're always on a cuts budget, since I have been on a cuts budget since I've been on the board since 2010. So it's important that you can maintain a vision when you don't have funds and you don't let a negative spiral happen to the district. And I think that comes from my business background because, you know, when you open a business, it doesn't always make money and you still have to have that vision and goal to lead and drive through. And so I think that is one of the things that makes me qualified. And I'm a mom of three students that have very diverse needs. I have a son who is a junior at Bend High and he is there for the CTE programs. He is building a battery-powered car currently. He's designed his own brake system, his own acceleration system, and it's, they welded the frames together. It's a super amazing program that ties engineering and STEM and, you know, core curriculum together.
I'm guessing he's a Lego Robotics then?
Yes. I only have one son, so those are my kids. And then I have a daughter who's at Summit, who is very artistic-minded and is in AP Art as a sophomore. And she is dyslexic. And so I have the perspective of having a kid that really, really struggles and wants to do good. It's hard to be the dyslexic kid in the AP high school. And that is her choice and so we support her in that. I also have a six-year-old that is, is a super reader and is a really accelerated learner. So I have, in my own house, I have a big spectrum of kids to see how diverse kids are.
I would say I can definitely relate to that as well because I have a child that has ADHD and a child that's in the TAG program. So kind of both ends of the spectrum represented. And in the same way, I can also say that I feel like neither one of them really get the attention that they need in their classroom. And to me, that's somewhat unfortunate. And I think of other kids that are just like mine, that their parents may not be aware and, you know, need assistance. They need, they need the school's help to guide them and make sure that their kids stay on the right path. You know, my son with ADHD probably would have been under the radar if I hadn't have been paying attention. And I think that there's hundreds of kids that are just like him that probably are under the radar and will struggle the farther they get in their education.
Well, there's so many different things I could springboard off of those things you just said. But just to maybe make it still a little bit broad, let's, I'm curious about what you think the largest challenges are in the district and maybe a little bit about how you see yourself solving those. So maybe we'll start with you this time, Sheri.
The largest challenge in the district is always the budget because it's been a cuts budget since I've been on board for 2010. And, you know, maintaining that vision is really always a challenge. So I've done a lot of work at the state level on revenue reform to try and get education, dollars that are dedicated to our schools. There's things that cause our classroom sizes to be too large, which are the PERS increases that are detrimental to our classrooms that, you know, I'm sure is what you're speaking to when you talk about kids not being able to get the proper attention they need. We have a $4.5 million rate increase alone for PERS this fall, so that's going to be very difficult to manage. I am hoping to be able to be in the seat to continue lobbying for funding in my efforts on a statewide level to get the legislature to value education. I also would like to continue to work on, around challenges, right? Mental health. Mental health is a huge challenge in our district and that's because of the budget cuts. When you cut as far away from the classroom as possible, that includes counseling and other support systems for social-emotional learning. And it's very unfortunate because we desperately need those things. And so I want to work collaboratively with other agencies that have mental health dollars to try and incorporate them in the schools. And I've been doing that for the past year and I'm hoping that we can get that to come to fruition to help our kids because we desperately need mental health. And then, those are really the biggest challenges. The other biggest challenge is growth. We have tremendous growth that's spread all over our city. And growth can be great, you just have to manage it well. The school district has done a good job of bringing bonds every five years and being ahead of it and maintaining our buildings and for safety and updating them. And we have to keep, continue to do that. And the bond is a really important thing and I'm hoping that that passes. And if that passes, it will bring challenges in that we have to be prudent and make sure we deliver what the community needs. And then also, if it doesn't pass, how do we handle that, the growth that we have? Because we have a lot of growth. By 2020, when the high school, if passes, is projected to open, we will be at full capacity in all four comprehensive high schools already. And so that is a big, big deal to manage. And so if it doesn't pass, we'll have some serious issues around that. And if it does pass, we'll have to make sure we build the best future-ready schools that have collaborative spaces and anticipate our future needs for our community.
Sheri, do you, before, do you, do you believe that if they found the funding for PERS, they would move that money into education?
I can't speak for them.
Yeah.
But my hope would be yes. I have an eternal optimistic side, sometimes maybe too much. But I really can't imagine us not getting more funding for education, so much that I've dedicated the last year of my time to go to Salem and be on the Revenue Reform Committee to try and figure out something between the business community and the education community that solves the problem. I did bring the study for you guys. This is a study that we did. We tried to come up with, we did extensive research on tax reform, on property taxes which has to be changed with constitutional amendment, which is really difficult to get, as well as CAD taxes, which are like the 97 tax, but they would be dedicated into education versus given to the legislature in a blank check. Because I, I hear your question and I'm thinking that we have to require something to mandate that it goes to education. Because I got on this board to fight for dollars to get in the classroom and I'm still fighting to be on this board to get dollars in the classroom. And that's not the right way for Oregon to be. I think we value education more than that as a society and my hope is that we can get there. But I'm hopeful that maybe there's some sort of grand bargain where each side gets less than they want and our society benefits by getting the middle and it goes to education and relieves our classroom pressure.
That's very optimistic.
Well, I mean, without going too far afield, I know that the school board, the Ben LePine School Board was one of the only ones to come out and with a position on Measure 97, so, and that was against. So I'm curious about your perspective on that.
So my perspective is that it was, when Ben Unger developed the bill, I met with him and it was dedicated to education. And then as we kept going down the line, it got further and further diluted because it got more and more interest. And I personally have watched 66 and 67 not come to classrooms. I've watched the lottery dollars not make it out to classrooms. And I don't want to support anything that doesn't, I don't want to support anything that people want to pass on the backs of our kids. I'm here to represent our children and that's what I told you I wanted to run from the school board for, because I want to represent them because I think other interested groups take them for things that they should not. And I don't want that to happen. I want those dollars to go exactly where they're promised. And if you can't put that in your bill, I cannot support it. And that's how I felt and that's how I still feel and that's why I've spent a year doing what I said I feel. There's ways in there. What that study will show you is that we decided we'd come up with a tax and then we decided we don't have any votes, so we can't come up with a tax. We have to just fuel the conversation. And the best way to fuel the conversation was to poll people after 97 and see what actually they did support. And what the poll shows is that they do support education, money being raised by not a sales tax, they don't support a sales tax at all. They support a smaller CAD tax that's broader-based, that goes across more agencies and is differentiated among business interests. Because some business interests have low profit margins where others have higher profit margins. And they'd like to see a tax that is dedicated to education. And that polls at 65% in that state survey. Most people hold on to their surveys. At OSBA, we decided in this Revenue Reform Committee that we wanted to get the information out and that was the goal, was to print up this survey and facilitate a conversation and lead this and talk to legislators and say, "Look, this is, you can't tell me people don't want money to go to education because I'm, I can show you with the gold standard of studies right here that they do." And so that is what I want to continue to do because I believe we can get there. And it's not just optimism, it's hard work that I've put in and, and research that I can show you that's there to do it. And so I believe we can get there.
Let's circle back because I do want to talk more about that.
I have a lot of things I want to address.
Yeah, well, we started with this, with challenges.
Can I move backwards? Is that all right?
Absolutely, yeah.
So addressing 97, I have to say, I definitely disagree with my opponent because she is supposed to be an advocate for schools and, you know, regardless, it was not a perfect bill, we all understand it. It was soundly defeated, we understand that. But her position as a school board member, I personally feel like she should have supported it or taken a neutral stance. I think it's not necessarily appropriate that we were the only school board in the state that did not support it. I, I have strong feelings about that. And going back to PERS, this has been, you know, her war cry for many years now is the PERS issue. And this certainly is a huge issue, no doubt about it. It's not going to be solved here in Bend, Oregon. It's not going to be solved by the Ben LePine School District. I appreciate her efforts, you know, going beyond that. But in that process, I believe that she has alienated a lot of our teachers because of her stance on it and some of our other public employees as well, because they all take part in PERS. And as far as that grand bargain, we've already, you know, this has already gone to the courts and they've decided that we cannot remove those monies that were already earned. That money has to be paid regardless. So I, you know, I'm super curious about any solutions. I hope that, I think, you know, we still have the end goal of wanting those dollars to be in the classroom and not wanting it to be on the backs of our teachers or the middle class. But I think, I think there are more creative solutions to this problem that need to be explored as well.
Do you have any, have you had any thoughts or been permitted any solutions that you support?
Well, I've been at this for about a month or so. So of course I've had solutions. And there's no way I'm going to match her, you know, level of research or expertise and she's been doing it for so many years. I, I do believe that there has to be, you know, that corporate tax she was speaking of, you know, not 97 obviously, since that was soundly defeated, but something similar to that, so it's just not always on the backs of our middle class. It has to be solved. It's, it's not just our school board, you know, our school district that's affected by it, this is across the entire state, the state. So we're just going to have to really be creative about our solutions and tighten our belt, tighten our belts where necessary.
Do you see, I mean, so the original question that we posed was challenges.
Yes.
So am I hearing that you think budget is?
Of course, budget is a challenge. I think that's true for every school board in the nation. Ours is no different. Fortunately, we have this looming budget crisis here in Oregon, which seems incredibly odd given that our economy is improving and, you know, we still are not at pre-recession level of spending for our schools and that's incredibly unfortunate to me. I think that class size is a huge issue. It's, you know, obviously my kids are an example, but I want to be an advocate for all kids. Every child deserves an individualized education and that's really important for them to have success throughout their years in a public school setting. Our, our ratio for school psychologists at the elementary level is 1 to 600. This is pretty ridiculous to me. This means that even the very best school psychologist could do nothing but, you know, deal with the most critical cases. So that means kids that are kind of borderline or struggling just don't get the attention they need and deserve. And I think this is really unfortunate. We can and should do better. Safety is another huge concern. Sheri actually had said that, you know, she thought they were doing a good job. I have to say I disagree. I mean, we have to look at Highland Gym, we have to look at the fact, the fact that Jewel had nearly a crisis as well, they had, you know, sagging roofs. Bend High still has, you know, buckets all over the place because they're collecting trips. We, you know, this bond really certainly does need to pass. We need to be able to maintain those schools that we have and then build the schools that we so desperately need, you know, to be able to keep those class sizes in check.
Well, that was, one of my other questions was just facilities management. I'm just going to put that, go back to you to let me start this one. I realize you've said some of this already, but what role do you see the board playing in the safety and facilities management realm, I guess?
Right. I think that's, I think our kids have to be number one across the board, whether it's class size, whether it's safety. I'm not sure that that happened. And I understand that administrators are always walking this tight rope. Budgets are super tight and it's like, okay, well, it might be a problem or it might not. But I look at that situation at Highland and I'm like, we really dodged a bullet and we need to use that as a catalyst for change. That was a huge red herring. It shouldn't have happened. I think it was a disappointment that it did. And that's not to say anyone's at fault. There's no one, I believe, on the board that would have intentionally put kids at risk. But I think that there was an error made by not taking things into consideration sooner. There was all sorts of stories and I was already clearing off my roof because I was like, oh my gosh, the weight of the snow on my roof is, you know, I've had horrible damage to my house as a result. So the fact that they waited as long as they did was maybe not the right thing for our kids. But at the same time, I don't feel like it was malicious intent or anything like that. It's, it's just, you know, do we take these monies that we want in a classroom and clear off roofs for a maybe? It had to have been a tough decision, but I think it could have been handled better.
Is it a school board decision?
I, I don't believe it's necessarily 100% a school board decision. I'm sure they were consulted, but I think that...
Were you guys consulted?
About clearing roofs?
About clearing roofs?
So we are a policy governance board. We manage through our N's. And I brought our N's for you. So you guys could look at our N's. That's part of our visionary process of leading the vision and making sure that we have goals and visions that are in place for, for all of the staff in the district. And safety is one of our very top goals. And, you know, I don't, I don't ever remember anyone consulting me about if they were going to clear roofs. But we were talking about clearing snow and managing ice dams and things like that. And so there was a lot of conversations about safety and, and how to get the schools cleared so that the kids could get in there and stuff like that. And I think it was a learning lesson.
Certainly.
And after, at the collapse, I actually was the second on the scene and I called 911 myself because the facilities manager was talking to our superintendent. I spent time with kids that would have been in that gym because we evacuated them out of Highland to make sure that roof was safe as well. They used my phone to call their parents to go home. So as school board, we're very involved and care very much and want to be there and make sure students are safe. And that is something that's very important and very scary and not something we take lightly. There's many things that affect student safety. You know, suicide is another big issue and that is something that is absolutely horrible when you get those phone calls. Student safety is by far and above the most important thing. We have to manage pick-up lines and make sure that, you know, that people are in charge of making, having safety up front at all points on many things that you don't even think about safety as being safety. And so with the roof collapse, I did advocate for a very thorough process of when we start clearing roofs and when we start hiring temporary staff. You can see that in the minutes, I didn't bring that for you, but that's in the February minutes of the board meeting. I wanted to know how much staff it took to clear it, at what time, and when we think we could clear it with less staff to try and remove it earlier so we don't have those things happen. And that we needed to put in place a plan for if something like this happens again. You know, they call it the 100-year storm, but we don't have the luxury. We have students, we have, you know, over 17,000 students that we have to care for on a daily basis. We don't have the luxury of waiting for the next time. We have to learn from this and we got lucky and I'm thankful that we got as lucky as we did.
Absolutely.
And, and we'll continue to make sure there's a thorough process involved. And so in the budget process, I plan on talking about when we start hiring some temporary staff. Because we hire temporary staff because maintenance is cut very low because we have to keep those dollars again in the classrooms because we don't have enough dollars. And when we have to cut maintenance staff, in order to maintain all of our grass, we have to use temporary workers. The, one of the things I want to bring up is using temporary workers to clear snow earlier. It's much easier to clear six inches of snow, over two and a half million feet of roof than it is to clear four and a half feet of snow. So, you know, you've got...
Let me get in right here and try to, because we're going to get to more subjects.
I actually have one more point on my, if that's all right.
Snow on the roof is important, but do you want to?
Yes. My other point is that I believe it's incredibly important to support our teachers and staff because I think that they are...
Let's circulate back to that.
Okay. No problem. If that's on the table, I just want to make sure it does not get missed out.
I'd like to just, because Measure 97 is such a big part of the discussion, I'd like to just circle back and try to be a little bit more specific. I mean, it was voted down, it's no longer before us. Going forward, if, if, I mean, it is, you know, budget's the, is always the biggest concern, I think we're all worried about that. What measures, and try to be specific, do you support? And I know you've got something in here, so maybe elaborate and any thoughts that you've come up with, and we'll start with Sheri, on what tax you would support or what funding mechanism? Or if you don't support any of those, then where would you find the money?
Well, there's a few things too. With regards to revenue, we're going to be subject to a two and a half Cadillac tax increase to our insurance cost for teachers this year due to Obamacare. So that's a two and a half percent increase on healthcare. Healthcare costs are going to go up 10% this year at minimum. So we know these, they're, they're coming. The healthcare is still a little squishy. It's not an absolute, but it's...
Oh, it's squishy.
It's going to be, we can, we can count on a 10% increase. That's a big number for a school district. It's on fixed budget. So right there, that's 12 and a half percent increase. Then we have PERS, which we've talked a little bit about and I didn't get to finish. These are the next 10 years and all the teachers that we need to lay off. When I advocate for PERS reform, it is for our teachers as well as our students. I want a system that is sustainable for our teachers. They have worked hard, they work hard with our students. And right now, we have young teachers that are working really hard to support a system that has been promised and has not been delivered. We have a $22 billion unfunded actuarial liability and that, that is coming directly out of our classrooms and it's still not being met. We have to have something sustainable.
Do you feel like it's a, so you feel like it's a spending problem, not a revenue?
Well, we have to have both because those, so when I show you those increases, I mean, they're 10 years. Look at the number of teachers that need to be like laid off over 10 years. That's not, and I, we've already...
I don't think anyone's arguing that PERS is a growing revenue or growing expense. It's the question, and whether that gets reformed or not. I would say even in a perfect world, if PERS is reformed, are, you're still going to need a revenue stream.
Yes, so that's my point, that's what I'm going at. So you've got the outflow that is equally as a problem with the increase in healthcare and the increase in PERS over the next 10 years. So you've got both of these happening at the same time and we need more revenue. So what that revenue looks like, you know, I, we've done the research and we're just asking the legislators to see what they come up with to put in place that we can support that will be dedicated to education. It has to be dedicated to education. But we also need...
So if someone came out with another Measure 97, because the biggest criticism, and I will come back to you at least in a second. The Measure 97, if Measure 97 had removed the problem that was plagued it of, it wasn't entirely dedicated to schools. You know, there was the potential and I think very real possibility they would use it for PERS. The school board would have supported it, or you in particular would have supported it?
But it wasn't dedicated to schools.
Okay, so but it looks like, it sounds like the...
But we're saying that if it comes back around, something's going to come back around.
Right.
And hopefully they fix that problem so everybody can know it's going to be for schools. But we're talking about a big tax, a corporate tax... But we're talking about a big tax, a corporate tax, a tax on, you know, a general tax for education. Would you support that?
I would have to see what's brought forward before I can say I'd support anything. I mean, it, I can't say, but I want something that's dedicated to education.
So just help me to know, I mean, I, I hear, what I believe your position is, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, is that it's mostly in refining the expense side rather than generating the revenue side? Like where, if, if, let's say all this comes true and still goes through...
I think they're both important.
Okay. What would be your, I, I understand your, the stuff you want to do on the expense side. What would you do for revenue?
Well, one thing that we did support with OSBA was Mark Hass's reform plan that he tried to get through before 97 came to the ballot and went and was very explosive to the whole conversation. It was very divisive to our state and he was really trying to work hard with the governor and the speaker to move this forward. And it was a smaller, broader tax that took away the existing business tax structure, which is cumbersome and expensive to collect. And it made a smaller CAD tax that was more broad. So it was on businesses over like a million and a half dollars, I believe.
And you supported that? That was a lot.
Yes.
So we're talking about, if I can try to rephrase it.
Right.
We've got, you know, do you maybe broadly see the budget problem we have as a revenue problem?
It is a revenue problem. It absolutely is. I mean, I think that this school has been tightening its belt for years and I, you know, sometimes you hear and like some people spouting off about it and I think that's absolutely incorrect based on what I've seen in the classroom firsthand. I mean, teachers buying their own supplies, lots of donations from parents when it's, when it's a possibility. It's absolutely a revenue problem. I think, I mean, Sheri's idea of it being like this education only idea, I think that's very idealistic. I don't think it's realistic. Not every person in Oregon has a child, not everyone supports our school districts. So I think it would have to be slightly more broad than what she's talking about. And there's, PERS is not just, you know, school employees. This is also our sheriffs and judges and other public employees. So, you know, for that, that, you know, gushing wound to be staunch, it, it needs to be a little bit more broad than just schools. And I think it's necessary and it needs to happen. Hopefully we can find something that is, is, you know, slightly more focused than 97 was. I think that was the issue that many people had with it, that they were afraid that it was too broad and it was not specific enough about where those monies were gonna go. So now let's go back to the drawing board and, you know, make sure we're, we're specific about that so people feel like they are getting what they need out of that.
So with the, you know, the increases in PERS and the escalation of stuff is a, is a very real problem.
Yes.
Or would you be willing to go back to the public employees and renegotiate the...
Current employees? I mean, we, we know we can't do that for past employees. They are going to get those monies regardless. It's already come to court. So if we're talking about...
Going forward.
Going forward. I would struggle with that because I, I feel like, okay, so the problem with PERS, as I understand it, was these tier one employees, this is where this big bloat comes from. And that's ninety-five percent of the problem. What, what the current employees are getting is not these astronomical dollars that we're talking about where people are, you know, sitting real pretty after working for thirty years. These are people that, you know, are probably gonna struggle and have to work much longer so they can continue to, you know, put away money in whatever way that they can in order to make them, make it a possibility for them to retire in some sort of good way. I, I feel that these teachers deserve to have a really solid retirement plan because they don't have a lot of disposable income. These are highly educated people that are paid not nearly what they would be if they were in, you know, the private sector. So, you know, they're, they're living very, very meager lives. So if we can offer them this, you know, okay, so we have this really great retirement plan for you, that for your years of dedicated service, you get to have this. I think it's worthwhile for us to make sure we can keep that as an incentive for our awesome teachers.
What do you say to people who say that public, the PERS program gets better benefits than these people who get in the private sector?
I mean, I've, I've read a little bit about it and that's definitely questionable. I mean, the 401K system is kind of what we have in the, the equivalent and over time, it's probably not as good and that's probably, you know, it's partly because it's managed by the person and, you know, I mean, it could be sticky, but then there's an argument that it actually costs employers far more money to have this 401K rather than some sort of pension plan because there's so much, so many times people leave their job. There's no incentive to stay. It's not like, it's like, I'm committed to this job for so many years that I then get to, you know, cash out. Instead, these employers are looking at huge amounts of turnover because there's no incentive for them to stay. So some, some studies actually show that it's far more expensive to have a system like a 401K rather than some sort of pension plan. So, I mean, you could play devil's advocate and say, I don't know that it really is better. I mean, I know that, you know, for my husband and myself, we have to be very, very careful about making sure we're preparing for our future and not relying solely on a 401K because I don't think it's gonna cut it.
Other question?
I'm just curious about...
I asked you your question, I'm sorry. Okay, good.
I guess there's the other flip side to that argument, that teachers would, or anyone in the system stays longer than they perhaps might otherwise because they want to get the pension and then does that reflect on, you know, does that mean poor teachers staying in the job? I don't know.
I mean, that's an excellent question. I think, I'm sorry, were you, you were...
I'm just...
In my, in my experience, now, you know, this is not this completely holistic approach, but the people that have been there and that are staying beyond their retirement years, they're there because they love it and that they're really good at what they do and that they're super passionate about it. And I think that that, you know, is a good thing. I don't think it's a bad thing. You know, I mean, certainly their retirement is tied to what their last salary was, so there is an incentive to stay in that situation. But I would, you know, maybe this is me being too optimistic. I would say a majority that are staying is because they love what they do and that is totally appropriate for me to think that they should continue to do that as long as they want.
Sure.
So the question is about teachers?
Well, we were talking about, you know, private sector retirement plans versus, versus the public PERS and in PERS, the longer you're there, the more you're gonna make. So does that mean that, you know, I'm just curious if you, that means that teachers stay longer and, you know, is this where we get...
Well, I think that we need to make sure we have great teachers in the classroom. The one thing that I can tell you is the best thing for children's success is having great teachers. And we need to make sure we have great teachers. And we did that through a number of ways, making sure that they have support, making sure there's accessible professional development. And on my time on the school board, I have worked collaboratively with the unions, past presidents of the unions, administrators and teachers to create a system called the PASS system, which is a performance-based system for compensation. And it's on a five-year MOU right now and it's working out really well. And it's also in collaboration with a teacher mentor grant. So to make sure that you're mentoring teachers that are great and making sure they're great to stay in the system. And the PASS system is on this five-year MOU. And one of the reasons that I want to stay on the school board is I want to get that put into place. We're one of forty districts, roughly forty districts in the nation that have such a system and I think ours is the best. I'm a little biased. But there was about forty of us that worked on this system together. And what it does is you're allowed to move up if you're doing more professional development and you're able to demonstrate that you're teaching great practices and research practices and best practices. And how they do that is we've modeled it after the national, the national teacher certificate, certification. And that national teacher certification makes you go through this really rigorous set of professional development. And you have to put together a portfolio and this teaching portfolio that you submit. And so they can do that. And in these five years, they'll be able to jump up to higher rates of pay if they can demonstrate they're a great teacher. So I think that we want to work forward with the system, not worry about working backwards. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So do you think it's like a merit-based pay increase then?
Well, it's, it's more than merit-based. It's, it's, it's research-based and it's based in practice and it's, it's, it's just really rigorous and it's, it's quite an amazing process. And what we've found is that we're only offering it to, we put all teachers that are coming into the system on this system. And we've found that teachers that are not in this system are asking to be put in the system because they like it so much. So I think it's one of the ways that you keep teachers motivated and engaged and, and, you know, encouraging greatness for all of our students. And I think it's an awesome thing.
Angela, do you have any questions?
I do, but they're not in the flow of...
Break the flow, Angela.
Switch gears. Well, I wanted to switch to kind of maybe to children, to the students, so we're talking a lot about the teachers. And I wanted to know, especially with vegetarian concerns, what, what should the school district do, what do you think is, we should do to better prepare our children, especially in these kind of changing times with Bend and, you know, the nation as well, to better prepare them to be better, better citizens, both locally and, you know, on a national level? So what, what could the school board do to better prepare them to be better citizens?
I think that's an excellent question.
Thank you.
I think that we need to promote a growth mindset in our schools so that kids feel like they can do things instead of teaching them what they can't do. That takes kids leaps and bounds ahead of, you know, the approach more that when we went to school. So this growth mindset, I think, is, is a really good thing to promote. Also, social emotional learning, I think, in this day and age where there's so much access to technology and bullying can be happening twenty-four hours a day, we need to make sure we have much more social emotional support for our kids. And, and when they have confidence, kids succeed. And that's one of the things that we've done with my daughter is instead of teaching her how to decode words, we're teaching her how to be confident. And when you teach a kid confidence and you instill that through a growth mindset and through social emotional support, I think they grow and flourish much better than if they didn't have those two types of support.
Do you find that in the current state, that the school board kind of supports what you value in that regard? I mean, it's kind of hard to, it's, it's, it's hard to kind of quantify those things that you're saying. Can be. You know, it's easier to say, okay, we need to clear our roofs or, you know, we need funding for that. But do you think, yeah, does the school board support it and...
Well, in that, so in those N's that I handed out, that's like the very big part. We also are really focused on getting from test-ready students to future-ready students. We don't want kids just to be ready for tests. That doesn't help them. They, they need to be ready for their future. So we really need to work on that. And so that's in our, our goals, more personalized learning. And we're always, the fun part about the work is talking exactly about this. And this is what I love and I love to research and look at and, and find best practices and bring them up for ideas to our superintendent and our administrative staff. And, you know, that's what the board does really well, I think.
So there is support, you're saying?
Yeah, oh, yeah. And so that's why, that's what's so important is to be able to get some money in, back into the schools so that we can put more of that in place. There is the social emotional school. When we opened Pacific Crest, we hired Chris Boyd as our principal, who is very focused on social emotional learning. And he has put into place a really robust social emotional learning program and the school board is very supportive of that.
Angela, back to you.
Okay, so I can't speak to the board supporting, you know, obviously not having the board member. But I can tell you what's been implemented in my kid's school, which I absolutely love, is called kindness counts. And it is an ongoing program. More kids are strongly encouraged to go out of their way to make sure that they are kind to others. And I think it can go a really long way. I mean, it just, it develops from such a young age that they can be so respectful of other students and, you know, even when they might act out because they're kids and they don't always, you know, make the right choices, but they can still go back and, you know, ask for forgiveness and then make it up to that person with a sweet note or something like that. And this is an ongoing thing at, you know, at the school. And I think it's incredibly valuable to make kids really conscientious students and being aware of others around them. I mean, young kids especially, they're just kind of living in a bubble and they're not really super aware of the world around them. So if we can tease out those little bits so they can develop that awareness, I think that's really what's gonna turn them into great citizens down the road. You know, I totally agree with what she said as far as not teaching to the test. I think that the school district is certainly working in the right way to make sure that that's not happening anymore. I think we had an entire generation of kids that weren't critically thinking. And that does not make for a very good citizen if you can't critically think. You have to be able to, you know, look at a situation and approach it from lots of different directions and, you know, come up with a solution maybe nobody else did rather than saying, you know, A, C, D. So I, I think that there is an excellent movement in that direction and we just need to reinforce that with appropriate funding.
Great. I just have one more, which kind of dovetails onto what you were just talking about. Did you have something?
I have another question.
I am particularly interested in diversity in schools as our area continues to grow in population size. So what initiatives do you support in terms of fostering inclusion and diversity in our schools and how do you communicate those values?
I think we have some issues with that. I think that we have a division between the east and the west. And I think we can do a much better job with that. I think one of the major issues is transportation. You know, we have this kind of concentration of magnets on the west side, which if you are experienced with that, you, you will notice that there is a portion of the population that is missing. And I know that there has been some outreach programs currently to try to make sure that that's not the case because I believe in diversity too. I think this is incredibly important and that we need to make sure that we have this balance. I mean, you can learn so much from other people from different cultures and to have, you know, a portion missing is, is not good for anyone. So if we can, I mean, it's, it's a complex problem. I know that the school board has looked at it in the past, but I do believe we can do a better job with more creative solutions like carpooling or things like that. I mean, the issue being that sometimes it's awareness, like they don't know that there are these options that they have because any student can go to any school in our district. But if they don't know that there's something that would be a really great fit for their kid, you know, then they don't even know that they can go there. And then the second issue would be transportation. If you're a working family and you have to be to, you know, be to work at eight AM and your kid doesn't catch the bus until, you know, eight fifteen and they have to catch a bus down the street because it's going to one of the magnet schools, that's not a really great solution for a family. So we really need to address this and fix the problem so that any family can have an equal opportunity to end, to go to any school that is appropriate for them.
So the last part was the communication of the values. How do you see communicating that?
Well, I know recently they did a Latino outreach and I think that that's a step in the right direction. And, I mean, emails are certainly good. I think if we can somehow maybe do a mailer or something on that, just to make sure that parents are aware. I mean, I believe when I became aware of it, it was word of mouth. So if there's certain parts of the community that are not getting that word of mouth and hearing that buzz, oh, what about this school or what about that school? We need to make sure that we're bridging those gaps. I don't, you know, think it's appropriate to isolate or think that one group shouldn't be a part of that. I, I think it's important that we are incredibly inclusive and make as many efforts as possible to make sure that every child is included.
Should I reiterate the question?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Thank you.
Diversity and inclusion in our schools are gonna continue to be even more prevalent issues as we continue to grow. So how do you support that and how do you... So how do you support that and how do you communicate those values?
So my son was born in New York City. So I, and we lived there for four years. And I love diversity and diverse populations. And while we live in Bend, that's definitely something that is, I wish we had more of. And one of the things the school board has done is embraced a dual immersion program that is over at Bear Creek that is very successful. And I love that program. It's quite amazing. One of the problems with growing it is that we don't have teachers a lot that are fluent in Spanish. And so we, as a district, we're proactive. And we reached out to CHOP Board, which I think you guys are probably familiar with, the CHOP Board project. And we reached out to them and asked for a grant to reach out to more people that are native Spanish speakers to be able to become teachers and bring them into our district. And so we have that grant going to try and get more teachers that are native Spanish speaking that we can get into our district and teach. In our dual immersion program, the ELL statistics, which the achievement gap is one of the, I know you guys asked me this question earlier, but the achievement gap is really one of the things that is one of the biggest problems that we have. Our achievement gap numbers are not moving as fast as we need them to and as high as we need them to. And so we really need to focus on why that's happening. But one of the things that we do have happening in our district is that the dual immersion program, those kids that are native Spanish speakers and of diverse backgrounds are able to test at the same test scores as the kids that are, you know, not. And, yeah.
It's an awesome program.
So that, growing that program, I think, is imperative. And we have to find a way to get the teachers that are able to teach those programs because our English language learner students really deserve the best education they can get. And I believe that's the best way we do it. And I don't know how we do it to get more. This year, we were very creative. We got two teachers to come from Spain on a visa. So I'm wondering if there's more people that we can reach out to, to get coming over on a visa to teach those classes because I really want to expand that program. I believe that we need to give all kids an equal shot. And that's one of the ways that we have done it. And when you want to expand things, you need things that work to be able to expand them out. And this is proven. You know, we look at the differences in kids that weren't in it and the kids that are, and their numbers are matching where the native English speakers are. And I think that is really just amazing. And so I, in my last board meeting, I pushed, the dual immersion program came and gave us a presentation. And in the minutes, you can see I pushed back saying, we really need to expand this program out further.
Are you, so would your goal be to extend it first to another elementary that would also feed into High Desert?
Well, right now, we have, the dual immersion program is, we're only able to serve half of the kids at Bear Creek. So I would love to see it be a full program at that school.
My daughter is in the program at High Desert.
Oh, so she's in the sixth grade?
She's actually seventh, so she's.
Oh, that's great.
Taking classes because that's all we can do.
And what does, what does she think of it?
She loves it. I mean, she's been in since kindergarten in Portland, so.
Yeah, and so.
Same thing there, finding teachers is seems to be the biggest question.
Yeah, and so that's what we've been doing is trying to expand the program with the kids that are in there. So we keep having the teachers that we can get, we're moving it to seventh grade and then we'll be moving to eighth grade. And so my goal is, if we can get a breakthrough on getting more teachers, then we could then get the, you know, because you know, you've been in Bear Creek, the, you've got the dual immersion program alongside of a regular school program. And so I'd like to see the whole school be dual immersion so that you have, and then, you know, you can get more kids in there.
Erin, anything else you have before we?
Yeah, I just have a final question. I'll just start with Angela on this one. Angela, is there a role for religion in education in the school system?
My personal opinion is no. I don't think, I mean, certainly, I think every religion is welcome. I think that we should honor all cultures and all religions. But I don't think that it is something, I think if you, let me rephrase a little bit. So I think it's, we can certainly teach in a broad way what multiple religions are like. And it's really kind of high, you know, this is what some cultures believe and this is what some cultures believe. But I would hesitate to have something that was really specific and non-inclusive because I feel like it would be inappropriate. I think the best thing we can do is honor whoever is in front of us and whatever culture they bring and whatever their religious standings. And, you know, not to say it's wrong, but certainly to say there are different ways of thinking. And what is right for you may not be right for this student. And we need to be very conscientious about that and make sure that everyone feels included in that situation.
Could you ask me the question again?
Sure.
Sorry.
What role, what role do you feel, if there is a role for religion in the public school system?
So do you mean like in being taught in classes or like? So the only place that I know that we teach things remotely about religion would be in history classes. You know, like what you'd be referring to in high school and things like that.
It's not, I'm not. No, I'm not interested in what's currently being done. I'm more interested in your philosophy about where the school system could go. And, or, you know, so I'm leaving the question really broad. This is more about what you feel is appropriate for religion in the school system.
You actually phrase it as, does religion play a role in the school system?
Does it play a role?
Does it play a role?
That might be more specific.
Yes, I would say that the only thing that it plays a role in would be in history classes. But should it, should it play a role?
A larger role.
Kind of a positive.
And we'll come back if you want to elaborate.
No, I think that's sort of, you know, for families to decide. And one thing that our schools do play a role in some religions is there are churches that utilize our schools when we're not using them. But it's utilizing our community buildings.
Instead of uses buildings.
Yeah, yeah. And so I think that is, I, you know, that's one of the things that I'm proud of is that our buildings are able to be used for other things because they're beautiful buildings and great assets for our community. And so the fact that, you know, there's churches in our schools is really, I think, awesome.
So I'm curious because I'm not a parent. Currently Easter's coming up, so having, you know, you have children in the school system, are they doing anything related to Easter? Are they teaching about Easter? Because that's a Christian-based event.
Or they can, depending on how you look at it.
So there's nothing celebratory going on or anything?
It's pretty restrictive. I mean, you'll see like at Christmas time, it's like you might do a tree or something, but you're not going to have like, let's do a, you know, whatever. No, I mean, it's going to be very high, you know, something that is hopefully non-offensive. And even something like a tree may not be appropriate for, you know, a child that is Jehovah's Witness or something like that. They may need to go in the classroom where they're doing the snowman project, you know, or something that's more winter-based or along those lines. I think that they're pretty.
They'll be Easter bunnies.
Pretty PC as far as that goes.
They'll be bunnies will be there.
The bunny.
I mean, I haven't heard of anything in my, either of my children's classrooms just from my own personal experience that they're doing.
But those kind of religious holidays kind of are a root, a kind of a tradition. So it's interesting because then you lose a little bit of that, that side of things, you know?
But we have to be conscientious about every student and not all students celebrate it as, you know, a religious holiday. And, you know, some religions still believe in that Jesus was resurrected. I mean, there's lots of different ways to look at it. And I think that they try to take the most broad stance that they can in those situations to be as inclusive as possible.
And Angela, did you want to come back?
The only other thought I had, and it's probably silly that I feel like I want to say it, but I think like at the high school level, a world religions class might be appropriate, you know, where there are a higher level thinking and you can have an appreciation for all religions across the board. I would just hesitate to make something that's really specific because I think it makes a lot of assumptions and it pigeonholes certain people and, you know, might be good for them and really inappropriate for others.
Is that something, so forgive me if I'm wrong on this, but the board reviews curriculum to kind of get a sense of what that is. So would that be something that you would feel like you really wanted to look at the curriculum and understand where it's coming from, just since we're on the topic?
I mean, sure, I think that every, every possible way to expand horizons should be explored. I think that you never know what is going to light a fire under a kid. And, you know, if there suddenly were questions about it or curiosities that it should certainly be looked at, whether or not it's something that could be achieved and put into the curriculum is a totally different question. I mean, we might go back to the Bear Creek teacher situation where it's like, we don't have somebody appropriate to teach this. But I think anything that can broaden your worldview is a great thing to consider.
I guess Sheri, have you can elaborate, just have you been in this instance before where you're looking at a particular piece of curriculum, maybe even a particular text, and asking those kind of questions like, hey, who wrote this? Who, you know, where did it come from, that kind of thing?
We adopt curriculums and we look at them. And we have teacher teams that are, you know, the experts. And they review all the, you know, like, the last one we did was math. And they reviewed all the math curriculum and then they bring all the books forward. And then we go in in the day and look through them. And they're there so that we can ask like, why do you like this versus that? Because, you know, I personally like to defer to the experts, but make sure that I'm looking at what they're looking at.
It seems like in math, it'd be more subjective. But if you're covering something like religion, you know, it's a little more.
I think.
I mean, I meant objective.
For, from my perspective, you want to hire great people that do a great job. And, you know, with policy governance, you know, we want to lead them with a vision and try not to, and get out of the way, you know, so that they can do great work within reason. You know, we're the check and the balance. So reviewing curriculum and stuff like that. But I don't think we review specific curriculum for specific classes. It's more like when we're purchasing a curriculum and implementing it forward. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah. So like a block of, like you said, like a subject-matter block? You would be reviewing the entire block at one time? As opposed to, oh, we're going to have a world religion class at Summit this year and?
Yeah, we don't, we don't review that in that sort of way.
So our time is drawing to an end. If you could, there's no way we can ask all the things that I'm sure you would like to say in the brief time we have. So Sheri, we started with Angela, we'll start with you for just closings. Any things you'd like to say that we might have missed? Or touch on?
I would like to say I have a proven track record. I've been on the board since 2010 and I've been through budgetary cuts. Hopefully we don't have another one. But right now, Beaverton laid off over 200 pink slips already this year. Portland has already cut 70 teachers from their roster as well. And you don't see that in our district. And that's because our board knows that 85% of our budget is staff. And we're very conscious of managing that and making sure that we keep as many staff in there as we possibly can. And I have lived that and advocated that for my time on the board. And I really think that it's important at this point that we have someone that can be strong in the local community and advocate for funds because our funds don't come from our local community due to Measure Five. We have to be able to have a statewide presence. And I have a very strong network at this point of working with the legislators to get funds to our district. And I'm hoping that I can be successful. And I'm hoping that I'll be the one that you endorse to keep doing my work. And my work speaks for itself. Thanks. Thank you.
I mean, I cannot compete with the experience that Sheri had, has had over the past seven years. I, I mean, she's clearly been very involved and been on lots of committees and gone to the state, things along those lines. And I think all those things hold value certainly. But I think that there is time for change. I think that there are many things that our board could have done better and that I can bring a very fresh perspective and some new energy to the board to approach things from a slightly different direction that may not have been considered in the past. A lot of what Sheri's been working on for seven years haven't come to much fruition from what I can see. Not that she hasn't worked hard and not that this isn't, you know, a challenging situation. But I think we can do better and that maybe we need to explore some other options. The feedback that I'm constantly hearing from teachers and parents is that our board has a very top-down view, meaning that they don't really feel involved. They don't feel a part of the process and they feel that they're mostly dictated to. And I think that we need to circle back to the community, make sure that our focus is always on the kids. We need to do a lot more listening rather than dictating and make sure that those community needs are forefront. You know, not that there aren't things that have to be done at the state level. But I'm fortunate in the fact that I have a lot of flexibility in my schedule that I can really dedicate as much time as I want to this. And I'm incredibly passionate about it. I can't wait to start exploring every school in our district and making sure that every family feels like they, you know, do have a voice and that they can come forward and that they're attending these board meetings. A lot of times it's not very many people in there and I'm not sure why that is. And sometimes you hear comments after the fact and I'm like, well, did you go to the board meeting? And you don't, they're like, no. But then they're real upset when a decision is made. So I think we need to make sure that we're communicating to their community, to our community, our constituents, that they are part of this process and they need to be included, teachers as well. So with that being said, I hope that I've earned your endorsement and I've definitely enjoyed this discussion. It's been really nice meeting Sheri for the first time, so I'm glad that you made that an availability to us.
Yeah. Thank you for your thanks.
Then thank you both for doing this.
Oh, sure.
We get a lot out of having both candidates in. We know it's not always the easiest format for.
It doesn't have to be.
Discussion, but it does turn out to usually be, usually be a good thing. And thanks for your public service for both of you being willing to do it and for your time on the board.
Thank you. All right, very nice to meet you.